While the meeting is to order, clerk please call the roll.
Counselor Woodland.
Present.
Counselor Bayes.
Present.
Counselor Donato.
Present.
Counselor Felkoff.
Present.
Counselor Feltnar.
Present.
Counselor Canelis.
Present.
Counselor Palumbo.
Present.
Counselor Pichorelli.
Present.
President Sideris.
Present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're at the first public forum. This is a sign up public forum, but we're kind of flexible. Russell Rico, and for those who may be speaking that don't know, our rules are that in public forum, you're allowed up to two minutes to speak, and we do not respond back to you or debate with you. Russell.
Mr. Pres- uh, Russell Rico, Fayette Street. Mister President, distinguished counselors, I'm here tonight to make a brief comment in reference to the bicycle and pedestrian plan. Public safety starts with individual responsibility. Safe walking, safe bicycling, and safe motor vehicle driving. Once a suggested master plan is on the table, we must have public meetings, explain the plan, and number one, demonstrate unsafe situations so we can try all to avoid them. It is time to demand the state legislature create bicycle licensing and compulsory insurance. Responsible bike riders should welcome this. It is time to hold the irresponsible accountable. Pedestrians, bicycles, and motor vehicles do not mix well. It is up to all of us to keep safety in mind and act responsibly. Every time I stop at a crosswalk for a pedestrian, I hope the pedestrian walks cautiously, and at the same time, hope that the motor vehicle driver is paying attention on why I have stopped and does not drive around me and hit the pedestrian. And I want to say to everyone, anyone that depends on government instead of their own individual responsibility lives in fantasy land. And that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in public forum? Seeing none, I close the public forum and move on. Can I get a mo- we have the examination of minutes. Can I get a motion of the minutes of March 26th?
Um, Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of March 26th as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five is President's report, and I'm looking for a referral to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances. And it shouldn't say to determine a process, but that's it. We do have a process for requests for information, but I do feel that we're, in a sense, kind of over abusing it. So I want the Committee on Rules and Ordinances to try to clean up the process and come back with some recommendations to the council. So can I get a motion for a referral to Rules and Ordinances?
Uh, Mr. President, I make a motion that we refer to the Rules and Ordinances Committee to reexamine a process for requests for information with a recommendation to the full council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, counselor.
Well, since I've been requesting a lot of information, I wonder if this is directed at me. And I would have liked a chance to, I would have liked some advance notice that this was a concern.
Uh, this is not directed at you.
Oh.
Or anyone in particular. This is just, I don't feel that the process that we have is working. So I would like to reexamine the process.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number six will be tabled to the next meeting. Number seven is public hearings, and it's a public hearing and vote on a proposed loan order authorizing the town treasurer with the approval of the town manager to borrow and or expend monies in the amount of $288,000 under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 7.1. And I'm not going to read the rest of it. And this is for the repairs to the girls locker room and bathrooms at the middle school. Mister Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mister President, members of town council. As you recall, two weeks ago tonight at the March 26th council meeting, the proposed loan order this evening was the first reading. Tonight's the administration presentation is I'll provide a brief opening remarks of providing the background to the proposed loan order before you. Subsequent to that, Ms. Lori Cable, the Director of Public Buildings, will make a brief PowerPoint presentation on the proposed loan order, or the work to be done at the girls lot, middle school, girls locker room and bathrooms. And then subsequent to Ms. Cable's presentation, I'll speak briefly on the proposed financing. So by way of background, Mister President, members of the council, the audience here and audience at home, back the end of January, January 31, the proposed fiscal year 20 to 24 capital improvement program was submitted pursuant to the provisions of the Home Rule Charter and the Town Council Resolution on Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Process. Council's Committee on Budget and Fiscal Oversight met several times thereafter, developing conceptual recommendations. The Honorable Town Council on March 12th adopted 29 conceptual recommendations on the fiscal year 20 to 24 capital improvement program. One of the conceptual recommendations, number 11, reads as follows, "Is proceed with the fiscal year 2019 proposed loan order for $288,000 for the middle school renovations to the girls locker room and bathrooms to be funded with a loan order increased from the original estimate from last year." So that's the background on the proposed loan order. At this point, Mister President, members of the council, I'd like to bring forward again, Ms. Lori Cable, the Director of Public Buildings, to walk through the work to be done at the middle school. Mister President.
[inaudible]
Thank you. Lori Cable, Director of Public Buildings. I just have a few slides. I know that we've talked about this a little bit before, but what we did was, last year, as Mr. Driscoll said, in capital plan for FY19, we had budgeted for $225,000 for what I was hoping would be the men's and the women's bathroom at the middle school. When we went through design, we went through a feasibility schematic stage, and we went through design. And halfway through the design, we realized that we really only had enough money to do one locker room. And at that time, the principal at the middle school had determined that the, that the women's bathroom was in need of the, of the work more than the men's bathroom at this time. So we started proceeding down the road for the, the women's locker room. So if you go to the next slide. So this just gives you a brief overview of kind of, of what the current locker room looks like. There was tons of unused space in this locker room. There was a lot of showers. Showers are not used by middle, middle school kids. There were little cubby holes with partitions that had screens. And if you go to the next slide, I'll show you that. It's probably easier. Curtains over it. So it really didn't give the privacy that was needed because those, those curtains like flop in the air. There was only one bathroom for all of the women, and the door was falling off. The toilet was wiggly. This was really in desperate need. So we went out what for design. If you go to the next slide, this was the proposal that they gave. Basically, they took away the showers. They added some storage space. They're going to take those same cubby holes, and they're going to be adding some doors to it. And we also added one toilet. So we now have two toilets in that area. When we left the design phase, we thought that we were within budget. It was about $220,000. If you go to the next slide, we went out to bid, and low bid ended up being $287,456.40. And so that was what we're proposing today. So there was a, there was a delta of about $62,500, but we are asking today for approval, as Mr. Driscoll said, for that extra money to move forward with this women's locker room. That schedule that I put up there is just a tentative schedule upon your approval tonight, that we can hopefully move forward with, you know, starting after today and still getting the work done by the end of the summer. So it will be ready at the, the next school year. So that is, that is the presentation I have today, unless there's any other questions.
Okay, Mister Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mister President, members of council. And lastly, the, before the President opens up for a public hearing, with respect to the financing of the proposed loan order before you, we forward kind of tentative monies that would be beginning for paying for the $288,000 over a 10-year period of time, beginning in fiscal year 2020 and through fiscal year 2029. So I certainly, Mister President, members of the council, as a follow-up to the town council's conceptual recommendation, I do believe the project is consistent. One of the town's priorities are not deferring maintenance or recognition of cost of capital equipment, facility, infrastructure in future years. That's the administration presentation, Mister President, before opening for a public hearing.
Thank you. I do now want to open it up for a public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from the audience. Seeing none, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion to bring this to the floor.
Um, Mister President, I make a motion that we approve this loan order for $288,000 for the girls locker rooms and bathrooms at the middle school.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Questions? Counselor Feltnar.
Thank you, Mister President. Excuse my voice. Excited to see this done. I was wondering if you could tell me how you decided to have two toilets versus, say, three, or meeting the needs of?
Um, it really had a lot to do with space. One of the reasons why the cost jumped so high from when, when we first did the first estimate was because of the walls and how thick they are. We're staying within the combine of the space. If we added another restroom, that would have taken away more privacy in locker room, or it's not really locker rooms, but those individual stall space. And that is what is extremely important right now to a lot of the, the middle schoolers and making sure that they have their privacy. So that became more important. So we felt that we definitely needed a handicap, accessible stall, but having that individual space was more important than adding that third toilet.
Counselor Donato.
Thank you, Mister President. I was just wondering if there's a contingency plan in place if construction's not done by the time school starts with the locker rooms. Can the middle school students get by if the locker rooms aren't available for a month or so?
Yes, we're, we were actually thinking that this could start before summer started. So it will be happening while they're still school. The PE teachers are aware of that. They've made contingency plans for that. There is another locker room in the, by the large locker room area if, if they need to. Usually it's just, they don't, you know, change too much, but it will give them that privacy for that time period. So yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Canelis.
Thank you. Just following up on the showers, you indicated that the middle school doesn't really use the showers. Going back to our day at the, at the East Junior, we did use the showers. So is there any contingency here if, in fact, you need showers again?
We, we, we talked about that, of if we wanted to keep one or two showers. And really the decision was, is that there really is not enough time in between classes. The kids do not want to shower at the middle school age. They, they don't work up, I guess, the sweat that they need to shower. But it was something that both the PE teachers and the principal felt like was, was not needed.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Bayes?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felkoff?
Yes.
Counselor Feltnar?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Pichorelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
President Sideris.
Yes, thank you, Lori. Thank you, Mister Manager. Next item is item, item number eight, which is informational presentations. And this is an informational presentation on the available emergency notification and community engagement tools available through Everbridge. And Matt Severance is a senior account manager, but I will recognize the town manager first.
Yeah, thank you, Mister President, and members of the council. Just by way of background on the, at the February 12th town council meeting, the Honorable Town Council adopted a action item that reads as follows, that the town council invite through the town council president and a representative of Everbridge to give a presentation to the town council on the available emergency notification and community engagement tools. The, as a follow-up to that action item, as well as conversation with the town council president, the informational presentation tonight is again on the available emergency notification and community engagement tools available through Everbridge. And the informational presentation will be given by Matt Severance, the senior account manager from state and local government, Everbridge. So at this point, Mister President, members of the council, Mister Severance.
Thank you, council members. Thanks for the, the return invite. I was here a couple months ago. So a lot of familiar faces here. What I'm going to cover today is a real brief overview of Everbridge, and then really dive down into some new functionalities around community engagement. That was a major theme from my, my last visit, to visit the town of Watertown, the city of Watertown. At a high level, just in terms of who Everbridge is, I want to show you kind of our breadth and scope within the industry of critical communications. We're in every single vertical. I handle the state and local government vertical. So I have communities like yourself, as well as statewide deployments throughout the, the United States, and as well as Canada. A couple things and a couple questions I always get from clients who are wondering about their residence and data, right? It's always important about privacy. Everbridge is the only critical communication platform that has Federamp certification. So what Federamp means is, we can sell to the federal government, you know, the ABC agencies, Army, Navy, you name it. We have 325 security protocols in place for data, and we take it extremely seriously. So a lot of times, you know, your constituents are going to be like, hey, if I give you my information, is it safe? And it's definitely safe with Everbridge. Couple, again, slides here, brief in terms of a couple of use cases that you guys could leverage the system for. It's an unlimited use contract. So we want communities like yourself to use Everbridge for operational efficiencies, whether it be Chief Quinn, Sergeant Demos of the Police Department, Parks and Rec. We want to drive engagement. We want to be able, have, able to notify your residents when you guys need to by using our software. That's the critical component of Everbridge. But here, just come, a couple lists, a list of different engagements that you can leverage it for. Again, it's an unlimited use contract for employees as well as to your residents for critical communications. So there's no overages or kind of cost overruns. We want you to use the system operationally, day in, day out. And here's the fun part. In terms, I would like to, if you have your cell phones out, and some of you folks were in the meeting last time I was here, I've already done this. But if you take your cell phones out, and if, if in the audience, you guys want to join too, please do. This is a, a feature that's already included in the contract. Everything I'm covering here is already included in your current contract. If you want to take out your cellphone and open up as if you're going to send a text message, and choose your contact, instead of your, your friend, your friend's number, whatever, just put 888-777 as the number you're going to be messaging to. And then in the body of your message, we're going to put the content, just write Watertown MA, all one word. You don't want to worry about capitalization or anything. Just make sure it says Watertown MA, all one word. It might help if it's all capitalized. And then hit send when you're ready. And so what we're doing here is, this is an anonymous opt-in that your residents, your employees, whoever you want to use this for, can send their, essentially, you're giving, they're giving permission to, for you guys, this, the town of Watertown, to send a notification to their cellphone, completely anonymously. So a lot of times, we have the manage, Everbridge portal where you'll go in, provide your address, your cellphone, email. Some residents, and some people just don't want to provide that information, and that's okay. This is a great way for anonymity to maintain. Some people just have an issue with giving their personal information out to the government, whatever. This way, you can kind of overcome that hurdle and opt in. And then now, you have not a cellphone number. You just have a, a number of people who've opted into a particular keyword, in this case, Watertown MA. You have actually five keywords at your discretion that you can use for, you know, Parks and Rec. You could have the town, the citywide notification like this. So if there's a, you know, three, three, huge fire, you know, three alarm fire downtown, you know, the chief would probably say, hey, I'm sending out this townwide, say, hey, avoid downtown, to everybody who opted in. Boom, instantaneously, right? And you saw in that bounce back message when you opted in, you can put in hyperlinks. You can, you know, say, hey, here's a festival, here's an information, here's a hyperlink, to drive people, to drive engagement. It's just another tool in your tool chest for not just Chief Quinn, not just Sergeant Demos of the police, but Parks and Rec. All sorts of different departments can leverage Everbridge. Just want to kind of show that as a pretty neat example. And then a couple other features that you guys have full access to that are new as of last fall. Instant communication with a smart conference. This can be utilized for employees, and you'd have the ability to send a notification out, a call. Because all your contacts are in your, our Everbridge system, they're verified, they're, they're legit, as they would say. They can hit a button and automatically be put into a smart conference. And so you'd see reporting. So a call comes in, they can either answer it, or if they get a missed call, they can dial back that number, and it's already verified who that person is because it's in your database. And there's no PIN to enter. It's just automatically simultaneously put into the conference. And here, the beauty of it is that the, essentially, the organizational person who set up that call can see exactly who has opted in, or who has signed in, when they joined, when they left. If there's a unknown caller, you can boot them because they're not verified. They shouldn't be on the call. You can mute people, and you can see who was invited and who did not show up. So if somebody says, oh, I was on that call, you can actually have an audit trail. And you can actually, if you want, live recording. So it'll show to all the other users, you know, it's live recording, and you can sign in and record the message. You can actually download the, the actual call metrics for who opted in, if you want. So this is all included as well for smart conference. Another feature is the premium audio bulletin board. This is a dedicated number that Everbridge has procured for the, for Watertown. And what's nice about this is that you can have this as your caller ID. So if you've got residents, I know, I was talking with Chief Quinn, he said all the time, people would just hit the redial button back to the missed call. And before, a couple, a couple months ago, a couple years ago, go to your office, right? And it was, it was causing a major headache for Chief Quinn. So this would actually go back to the actual message that was sent out. So it is, again, if, like other cities, they have a 311 center, or it goes to 911, a PSAP regional center, and you're inundating the emergency responders, this kind of nullifies that whole problem. And it goes back to the actual message, and they're not causing any questions around the, the system. And then translation services. So Everbridge has the ability to use Google Translates for notifications. We use our incident communication templates that can be transcribed in dozens of languages at this point. We're a global company. So we're in, I think, 60 or 70 different countries right now for clients. And so you have much, pretty big language requirements, and we can meet those. And also, you can save these templates. So if you have a large, you know, Laotian, or Spanish, French, whatever you have, that's a predominant component of your, of your community, you can actually save templates for common use cases and send out to the multiple folks. And one last point I wanted to show was the iPOS. You probably have, kind of familiar now that the, I think, there's a federal test back in November with the WIA, Wireless Emergency Alert. Everyone got that push notification on their cellphone back in November. You guys have that technology as well with, with the city of Watertown. So there's some new enhancements going on with FEMA. FEMA has actually increased the character limit from 90 to 360. And now they'll be going both in English and Spanish. So when you actually get that WIA alert from, you know, yourself, or from any other lawful agency who has access to FEMA iPOS, you can actually choose Spanish or English. So that's coming and coming from, from FEMA that will be deployed through the Everbridge system with, within what you have currently. So with that, I'll open up any questions if you have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions from the audience, sorry, from the council. Lisa, Counsel Feltnar.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could expound a little more on the callback dedicated number, how that works again?
Yep, absolutely. So Everbridge, as part of the MM Pro package that we upgraded the city, we've pro, we've actually gone, got a dedicated phone number. I'll bring it up right here. This is that number. And this could be customized. We can look at a toll-free number, but a 617 number might work, or 781. We can always look at that and tweaking that with the chief. So what happens is, the message sender, whether it be police, fire, whoever, can act- So what happens is the message sender, whether it be police, fire, whoever, can actually publish this out to that number. So as soon as calls start going out, people can either dial this number if they have it saved, or they can change the caller ID that Chief Quinn or Sergeant Demos is sending from the police or fire. It can come across as this number, and so a lot of folks will just see a missed call, and they don't want to check their voicemail, right? They'll just hit redial, right to that number. And that, what will happen is it'll bring them to this number, it'll actually bring to the recording that was intended going outbound, they'll just get it going on inbound method. So it doesn't cause headaches for staffing, and especially when it's a large-scale disaster or situation, you don't need to be fielding calls from people, and they could actually just be diverted to this message and get it on their own time.
Yes.
And I was wondering if you provide any training in terms of the actual messaging? You mentioned templates, but, you know, standard ways to, you know, depending on the degree of emergency, et cetera.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we have Everbridge University, which is all available 24/7 through Everbridge for the account administrators. So anyone with that account admin can get access to that training on demand. The city has actually, every year, has always bought a couple hours of professional training, where we actually send somebody from our office onsite to work with the police and fire on settings, new products that we're always coming out with, so you can maximize the value of the system, but also best practices in what we see with other agencies, whether it be large cities, statewide deployments, that sort of thing. So best practices, templates, and definitely with the new products that we've added since last year, you know, we're going to be having the renewal, I think, in June or so, right, Chief? And we'll typically send somebody else out here, and I usually come out as well to kind of talk to the first responders and to maximize the new tools.
Council Donato.
Would you mind just explaining the keyword slide again? So we all entered Watertown, MA, so if you did that, you've now opted in to receive certain messages.
Yes.
But there would be other keywords you could text if you want to receive topic-specific messages?
Yes, and that's completely up to the agency. In this case, police or fire typically, right? So, and I feel like I'm kneeling down here, you know, there we go, a little better for you guys. So in the contract, we provide five custom keywords for somebody who purchases the community engagement module. So Watertown and Watertown, MA, I have reserved personally, just because we've got a long history with Watertown. You've been fantastic clients, and you guys take it seriously, and you're right in our backyard. We work in Burlington, Mass. That's where we're based out of. So for example, if you want to have a town-wide alert, Watertown, MA, which is, makes sense, or just Watertown, I think I've reserved that for you, you could promote that to all your community members and say, hey, if you want to receive text messages from police and fire, public safety notifications. And again, they don't want to go through the front door in the sense of like going through the Manch Bridge portal and opting in, providing their home address, multiple contact paths, et cetera. They can do it anonymously. And this really helps out with transient population, you have a lot of renters in Watertown, young professionals that are going to be here for six months, two years, and then they're going to move on, you know, what are they going to do? And they're not going to take the step to go to a portal and sign up, and they just have a problem with giving that information out anyway. This way, you get a quick conversion rate, it's, there's no friction here. Everyone's used to opting in, getting a coupon, opting in to get a benefit. Well, this is a benefit from Watertown, to be able to provide them with up-to-date emergency notifications if there's a situation. But you do get five keywords, so Parks and Rec might want to have one. They could come up with a cool keyword, promote that to the parents, have them opt-in. And when there's inclement weather and soccer season's starting up again, right, spring soccer, I know my kids are getting ready to play, they can actually send a text message, hey, you know what, the fields are saturated, it's all canceled, instead of having everybody go down to the soccer fields and then wait around to get an announcement. I know that's how I was, you know, 30 years ago, living in Northborough, Mass. You know, we'd go down, like, oh, 20 minutes, and then, oh yeah, there's no games. Like, what the heck, we blew her Saturday morning. So there's a million ways to use Everbridge, and the biggest thing is it's an unlimited use contract. We want you to leverage it left, right, and center, and make it operationally.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Council Cornelius.
Thank you. Thank you for this great presentation. Would it be possible to also have this slide presentation sent to us?
Absolutely. I'll send this to Chief Quinn tomorrow morning, and you'll have it.
Thank you. I know that Everbridge is used for public safety. Maybe it's best for the administration to address this. Is there any other department that uses Everbridge, or would it be beneficial for other departments as well?
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Mr. President, a Council Cornelius query. One of the things that we've been doing is we utilize it with, not that it happens very often, but when we close Town Hall for a bit for a snowstorm, it's, we would be able to send out notifications to employees instead of using a phone tree or whatever, to have done that electronically and looking to work with Mr. Severance on some other items.
That's a great point. The phone tree, the old way of, you know, dialing and smiling and saying, hey, you closed. You have the ability to have a link with your HRIS system, your ERP, you know, whatever system you guys have for town employees, it can sync with Everbridge, and you just say, hey, all countywide or citywide employees, we're going to send a notification out. You literally hit one group or one rule in our system, and that message that you just typed up goes immediately to those folks, in all different contact paths. So via your city email, personal email, city phone, cellphone, personal phone, you name it, those contact paths, if they're in the profile, you can get all different devices lit up at the same time. So absolutely.
If I may, as a follow-up, so are we duplicating services by having Civic Plus as well? I mean, I don't understand. We have internal notification that goes out to residents using Civic Plus. Should we be using Everbridge, or is this an overlap or two different entities?
Mr. President, I would say it's two different entities, and we're certainly, with the upcoming IT assessment, we'll certainly look at both of theirs to make sure there's no overlap. But quite frankly, what Mr. Severance was talking about, particularly with police and fire, and then utilizing it for getting information out to our employees, that Town Hall is not open, or the library's not open, but it's a good point that Council raised. Certainly with the upcoming IT assessment, we'll make sure that there's a review of both services.
Thank you.
Council Felkoff.
Thanks. Now that we're all opted in, can we opt out?
Yes, so you should have gotten a little bounce back. And it tells the user exactly how to stop receiving messages. So all you have to do-
Reply stop.
Yep, reply stop, and you'd be opted out. And again, one thing I'll just stress, I know I'm tight on time for you guys, is the ability to reach people who you otherwise would not be able to reach in your community. This opt-in is extremely easy, again, it's borderline frictionless, right? And they're used to doing it, and it's truly anonymous. So you can get over that big hurdle that we have across the country. It's not just here or somewhere regionally, it's everywhere, where they're like, I don't want to give that information away. Coupled with the Federam certification, our take on privacy, this is truly anonymous. We don't know their cellphone numbers, you guys don't know their cellphone numbers, but you can provide, you know, up-to-date information timely, immediately, when there's a disaster, or if you guys have a festival, right? If you've got a big annual festival, you want to promote this in your Chamber of Commerce, you know, the marketing material, say, hey, text blah, blah, blah to 888-777, and then you can send them updates on, if the fireworks are delayed an hour, or if the presenter or the Carrie Underwood's going to come to a singing event, you know, she's not coming or it's delayed, you can provide that intel to the folks that need it.
Any other questions or comments? Before, I appreciate your presentation this evening, but before you leave, I want you to leave that slide up for a second. I do feel that, because the Committee on Media and Public Outreach has been working on this, and there are some examples here, because we do have an unlimited contract, I'm looking at licensing, and there's signs on the front door downstairs reminding people that they can come in for their dog licenses. And Peter Santola put out a thing yesterday that the fields were closed because of rain. So my suggestion this evening is to add to the referral to the Committee on Media and Public Outreach, that we ask that the manager or his designee work with the committee to come up with other ways that we could utilize the services that we're paying for. So I would ask for a motion to that effect, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion that the administration work with the Committee on Media and Public Outreach to come up with a plan to, using the Everbridge system, for sending messages out to the public about town business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you again very much.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Next item on the agenda is item nine, which is motions, orders, and resolutions. And 9A is a resolution authorizing a transfer in the amount of $209,378 for various fiscal year 2019 accounts to the fiscal year 2019 snow and ice rental of equipment account in order to fund the snow and ice removal deficit. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Town Council, as you recall, four weeks ago tonight at the March 12th Town Council meeting, the Town Council had voted pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 31D of the Mass General Laws to authorize expenditures in excess of available appropriations for snow and ice removal for the remainder of this fiscal year. As stated that evening, action on the fiscal year 2019 snow and ice removal deficit needs to be taken prior to the end of fiscal year, of this fiscal year, in order to avoid raising the deficit in the fiscal year 2020 budget. With forward correspondence, spreadsheets indicating the revised fiscal year 2019 snow and ice removal budget excluding the replacement of equipment account is $1,320,000. Expenditures and encumbrances to date total $1,484,810, which results in a snow and ice removal deficit of $164,810. Again, by way of background, last year, the snow and ice expenditures were $1,868, and the year before was a little shy of $1.9 million. So, Mr. President, members of the council, the, tonight's action to address the snow and ice deficit for fiscal year 2019, as the president indicated, the proposed transfer would be $209,378. It would be from the fiscal year 2019 Town Council Reserve, $164,810. And then two internal snow and ice removal accounts that total $44,568. They would all be transferred to the fiscal year 2019 snow and ice rental of equipment to the tune of $209,378. So again, Mr. President, members of the council, I respect, we ask your favorable consideration of the proposed transfer for $209,378.
Let me, before I ask for a motion, let me point out to everyone that Town Auditor, Mr. Tracy, has put the reserve fund activity in front of us for this evening, and it includes the transfers that we will be considering. So can I get a motion on this first transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $209,378.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Donato?
Yes.
Council Felkoff?
Yes.
Council Feltner?
Yes.
Council Cornelius?
Yes.
Council Palumbo?
Yes.
Council Pittoirelli?
Yes.
Council Woodland?
Yes.
Council Baze?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. 9B is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $22,000 from the fiscal year 2019 Town Council Reserve account to the fiscal year 2019 Veterans Benefits account. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of Town Council, this is, again, the second transfer of the evening. This is related to the town's Veteran Services Officer, Mr. Patrick J. George, indicating foreign correspondence about the need for additional funding of the Veterans Benefit Account for the remainder of the fiscal year. Prior to having Mr. George come forward to briefly speak to the proposed request for additional funding of the Veterans Benefit Account, I'd like to formally introduce our new Veteran Services Officer, who's into his fourth week of work for the town of Watertown. Patrick J. George is, again, assumed the position of Veteran Services Officer effective March 18. Mr. George has five years of experience in the United States Marine Corps as a Computer Systems Administrator. During his years of service, Mr. George was a recipient of the Joint Service Accommodation Medal for accomplishments related to instruction and development of the Afghanistan National Army Soldiers ANA and Vehicle Maintenance and Convoy Operations, and also the recipient of the Naval Achievement Medal for serving as an IT section manager for the Marine Helicopter Squadron in support of Operation Enduring Freeman. With respect to background, education background, Mr. George includes, has a Bachelor of Science in Government and Philosophy, as well as a Master in Science and Ethics in Public Policy for Suffolk University. During his time at Suffolk University, Patrick was active in the veterans' community, revived the Suffolk University Veterans Organization, and participated as a student representative on the Suffolk President's Commission for Veterans and Active Duty Students. Additionally, in his senior year in college, Patrick interned with the Massachusetts General Hospital's Home Base Program, providing information to veterans at Suffolk University and beyond on what services they were eligible through this program. Mr. George has been a policy analyst at the Massachusetts State House and familiar with Veterans Benefits and Joint Committee on Veterans and Federal Affairs. Two weeks ago, yesterday, Patrick and I visited, went to the Shut Detachment to a gathering of the veterans, kind of a meet and greet that went very well. We're very pleased to have Mr. George on as a new member of our administration. The subsequent to, Mr. George briefly speak on it, I will speak to the transfer before you. Mr. President, members of the council, at this point, Patrick J. George, our new Veteran Services Officer. Mr. President.
Patrick, formally, I'd like to welcome you here into the town of Watertown, and thank you for joining us, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Town Council. I would like to thank you for the warm introduction, and Mr. Driscoll for the warm introduction as well. Chapter 115, which is the primary veterans' benefit for veteran service officers to administer in Massachusetts, is a unique benefit that is only, only exists in Massachusetts. It's there to help veterans who might be unemployed, unable to be employed, or just all around unfortunately in some bad circumstances, that they need some support, and this benefit exists to help them for that. Increased medical costs, increased prescriptions, increased dental and eye examinations have sort of increased the monthly benefit for this, and as such, we are here to request the additional funding. On a per-month basis, throughout this fiscal year, there's been a high of 28 Chapter 115 recipients and a low of 21, which was from January and February. This number, given the breadth of the benefit, can expand and contract depending on the month, and as such, it's difficult to sort of pinpoint the exact number, there's no exact formula to pinpoint this number. Seventy-five percent of the money that is given to the residents of Watertown, the Chapter 115 recipients from Watertown, is reimbursed by the state following fiscal year. And as such, we are fortunate that this benefit exists, and we're hoping that this money, this transfer can be initiated.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to answer the questions.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of $22,000.
Is there a second? Any discussion or questions? Mr. Manager.
Yeah, just, Mr. President, just one thing I would like to point out, again, hopefully two weeks from tonight, we'll submit the fiscal year 2020 budget. Assuming favorable consideration tonight, we would be looking to address the fiscal year 2020 budget with the same level of spending. So in essence, it doesn't really make any sense to provide Mr. George with additional funds for fiscal year 19, and then assuming that, oh, the spending level will go back to the previous dollar amount. So we will be submitting, when the budget comes due two weeks from tonight, providing a white-type dollar amount that's before you this evening for fiscal year 2020. Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Council Baze.
So you said we get it reimbursed, is that the full amount, or is 75% of-
75% is reimbursed, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Council Felkoff?
Yes.
Council Feltner?
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Council Cornelius?
Yes.
Council Palumbo?
Yes.
Council Pittoirelli?
Yes.
Council Woodland?
Yes.
Council Baze?
Yes.
Council Donato?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Thanks again. 9C is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $70,000 from the fiscal year 2019 Town Council Reserve account to the fiscal year 2019 Fire Vehicle Maintenance account. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, correspondence was forwarded for this item tonight from Chief Robert Quinn, along with Mr. Tracy, the Town Audit Assistant Town Manager of Finance. The proposed transfer would be from the fiscal year 2019 Town Council Reserve to the fiscal year 2019 Fire Vehicle Maintenance account. fiscal year 2019 Fire Vehicle Maintenance account. I'd like to bring forward Chief Quinn to briefly talk about, as indicated in the correspondence dated April 3rd, there were several unexpected repairs that have been very expensive and had a big impact on the Fire Vehicle Maintenance Account. So, Mr. President, members of the council, Chief Robert Quinn.
Welcome, Mr. Quinn. President, members of the council. Yeah, this year has been a little daunting with some of the repairs we had to do. They're very expensive. You know, we had some steering problems in the ladder truck, which equated to over $20,000 worth of work. Our engine four needed to be, had some rehab work, and also needed new frame rails, which were very expensive and included a $45,000 price tag, and we had some transmission problems that were over $12,000, with several no starts. A lot of these new apparatus have a lot of computer control, like everybody's car does, but then, you know, and when problems happen, it's expensive to fix it. You know, we have been able to try to utilize the DPW to do some of our repairs, but a lot of our repairs need to be sent out to shops that are far away. We've had several toes this year because of just the trucks have not worked, and, you know, we're looking into the maintenance, but we really, you know, we still have three months left in the year. We have, our ladders have to go for their service testing, and the past couple of years, due to the age of the ladders, they've needed some work, and we really feel this money is necessary to maintain the fleet for the rest of the fiscal year.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the resolution, please?
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the transfer of funds of $70,000.
Is there a second? Discussion? Counselor Felkoff?
Where do you have to take a fire engine to be fixed?
We send it to Cummings Diesel down in Dedham is one spot. Greenwood Fire Apparatus is in North Attleboro, and that's the two.
And did they ever just send mechanics to you?
No, because they need a lift a lot of times, and they need the proper equipment and tools that they just don't know what they're going to need. Like I say, some of the smaller routine stuff, we're able to send to the DPW, but some of the intricate stuff, it has to go down to the companies.
You had someone in the department who was adept at fixing vehicles, who retired?
Retired.
Yeah, I knew he retired. Has that made a big change in your needs?
You know, we've taken over some of the responsibilities internally. Deputy Ionetta takes on a lot of the oversight that the firefighter who did the mechanics were, but he's been working in concert with the DPW mechanic to try to do like smaller things here, but there's still a lot of major stuff that we need to send out. We just can't do it all. The preventative maintenance, stuff like that, we can do locally. He coordinates that with the mechanic at the DPW, but, you know, when a computer chip breaks down, or a turbo, or power steering goes, like, we have to send it out, and we have to tow it a lot of times.
Must be a really big lift.
It is, yeah. Thankfully, we have a couple of big tow companies around here that have the tow trucks that can tow the fire trucks, and, you know, we have the fire apparatus places that can do the work.
Thank you.
Counselor Baze?
I'm just curious how old the fire trucks that have needed most of the work, like the ladder, how old are those trucks?
One was in, from '05, and one is from '07, and they're in the capital plan to be replaced over the next five years.
That's what I was going to ask the next question.
Any other comments? Counselor Cornelis?
Thank you. Certainly, we're all going to be, I'm speaking for myself, I'd be very supportive of transferring the funds because we want our equipment to be top-notch for the people who ride on these vehicles and give themselves for our community. Is there anything that we should be looking at? Are there different types of vehicles, different brands? Are these unusual expenses that we are incurring?
No, I just think, I just don't think that they're making trucks like they used to. I mean, you used to be able to get a good 15 years out of a truck. I just don't think the quality is there, and then they're not lasting as long, and the older they get, they wear down quicker.
How about warranties? Are there warranty packages?
No, not really. You know, warranties, I mean, a lot of the work is beyond the warranties, you know. It's just, it's not, and it's not just the fire trucks we buy. I mean, I talked to other chiefs. Other chiefs have the same issues with other brands of fire trucks. They all have their problems, and it's just that the quality of the trucks aren't as good as they might have been, you know, 20 years ago.
Are there extended warranty packages that can be purchased?
There probably is. We have utilized some. The warranties are fairly good, you know, like, but I can look into that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Feltner?
Yes.
Counselor Cornelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felkoff?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. 9D is a resolution authorized filing with the General Court of a petition for a special act for a public-private partnership to undertake renovations and improvements at Arsenal Park and an act providing for the construction of improvements to Arsenal Park in the Town of Watertown. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Town Council. Be three presenters before you tonight on this agenda item. I'll speak first to kind of providing the background to the proposed agenda item tonight, then Mr. McGoon will speak, and then Mr. Rich will speak. The, just by way of background, again, this is related to one of the conceptual recommendations that the Honorable Town Council adopted at the March 12th Town Council meeting on the fiscal year 20 to 24 Capitol Improvement Program. It's conceptual recommendation number 28, and it reads as follows, regarding Arsenal Park, for the FY '20 proposed law and order for $250,000 for design, proceed subject to the condition that the Department of Community Development and Planning, in conjunction with the Conservation Commission and Recreation Department, shall hold community meetings to ensure the work is consistent with improvements proposed as part of the development mitigation, and have one or more informational presentations to the Town Council. And for the FY '20 proposed law and order, $4.3 million for renovations, proceed subject to the condition that developer mitigation and proposed iQube funds will offset a portion of the cost as planned. So, at this point, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to have Mr. McGoon come forward to speak to the efforts to date on the proposed renovations to Arsenal Park, but specifically related to this conceptual recommendation on development mitigation. Subsequent to Mr. McGoon's presentation, Attorney Rich will speak on the resolution before you, as well as the thinking of the proposed or the recommended proposed act providing for the construction improvements to Arsenal Park. So, at this point, Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Stephen McGoon, the Director of Community Development and Planning and Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. President, members of the council and the public, as you're aware, the department's been working with Conservation Commission for some time now, working on a design for Arsenal Park. The Conservation Commission recently adopted or approved a 25% design for the park after a pretty extensive process involving a lot of community meetings and a lot of discussion about some of the details of what would go into that park. At the same time, Boilstone Properties has been progressing with the approval and obviously the construction of the Arsenal Yards project adjacent to the park, and they expect to have some business occupancies this fall adjacent to the park. One of the good things that that provides us, the opportunity for us, to be able to create some efficiencies and offset some of the costs that the town would otherwise bear in the construction of the park by partnering with Boilstone Properties to have them do some of that work and utilizing the mitigation that they would provide for the construction of Arsenal Park. So, it's in our best interest, both for the developer and for the town, to look at ways to coordinate and provide that maximum benefit to the town in terms of making those improvements a reality. They have contractors on site. They have, are doing work currently in the vicinity of the park and would be able to obviously mobilize and do that more cheaply than we would be able to do and more quickly. So, in order to expedite the design and the construction of the easternmost portion of the project, in order for it to coincide with some of the fall opening of businesses in that portion of the project, it would require that we expedite that process, and the statutory procurement process that the town would typically undertake for both that design and construction for public property would not work with that timeline and would obviously impact our ability to coordinate and create that public-private partnership and would have a negative impact on those potential savings to the taxpayers. So, in order to make the timing of that partnership work, we'd need to accelerate that design and construction portion for that eastern phase, Phase 1 of the project, and again, in order to make that happen, we'd need to expedite that, and in order to do so, and to create that public-private partnership, it would require a special act. The special act providing for the construction improvements in Arsenal Park would allow the Town of Watertown to enter into one or more agreements with the private parties, excuse me, for the coordination, funding, and construction of the renovations, improvements, and upgrades of the property owned and controlled by the Town of Watertown. I understand that Attorney Rich will now go through that resolution and draft special act.
Thank you. Attorney Rich?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I think Mr. McGoon summed up quite a bit of what this project is about. As the Town Council knows, there's an extensive procurement process that's involved any time that municipality expends money on public projects, and unfortunately, that process really does not lend itself well to partnerships with private entities. So, in this case, where the town has its project, and the developer has its project, and the two projects essentially abut one another, there are obvious economies of scale and benefits to the two parties working together, but as soon as the town contributes dollar one into that project, it becomes a publicly funded project and is subject to the procurement statutes that are governing with respect to public works projects. So, this would involve an extensive bidding process, would involve a, the implications of bonding and a number of other requirements that take time. The bidding process itself takes a couple of months between putting together an RFP power, actually Invitation for Bids package, and advertising, receiving the bids, and tabulating and awarding the contract, and then receiving the appropriate bonds and contracts and insurance documents. So, it's a lengthy process. In speaking with the developers, it was very obvious that they are essentially raring to go on this project. They want to move this project forward to coordinate with the opening of their commercial interests at Arsenal Yards, and they are eager, as, well, as part of their permit, they are required to contribute to the town towards this project. And obviously, one mechanism would simply be to have the funds come directly from the developer to the town, and the town would take those funds and apply them, would use those funds towards the overall project. The problem with that is, right now, while the town does have a design firm in place, and there'll be, one of the aspects of this would be to allow further funding of that design firm through the developer, but once you got past that design process, if the town was combining the developer's private funds with the town's public funds, again, we'd be back into this procurement process, which would delay the Arsenal Yards project and would delay the town's project, and may actually result in a situation where the Arsenal Yards project would stop at the line between the two projects, and unsightly fencing would be required to address liability issues and the lack of completion between the two projects. So, there would be an interference there. What was determined would actually be greatly beneficial to the town, of course, would be to combine forces to allow essentially economies of scale and the benefits of private contracting process, which is not as constrained as that of the town, to move forward and undertake this essentially in the vein of a private project, still overseen by the town, still subject to the town's design through its designer, CDM, but accomplished through contractors, approved by the town, but essentially employed by the private developer, and that would be pursuant to an agreement between the town and the developer. In order to accomplish all of these exciting synergies, there would be the necessity, in my opinion, of special legislation that would allow the town to work with a private entity to avoid the complications and delays of the procurement statutes and allow the two parties to seamlessly work together to accomplish this goal. The one thing that we made clear in putting this together, I assume you've seen the two documents, one is the resolution that goes through the benefits and purposes of seeking the special legislation, and then there's the special legislation itself. Special legislation, again, exempts the town and the private party as partners in this project from the statutory procurement procedures, but it specifically does not exempt the project from the implications and applications of the prevailing wage statute. So, that would guarantee that laborers on this project would be paid in the similar manner as they would on a public project under the state-mandated prevailing wage process, and that's obviously a process that's very important to protect. So, we made that clear, and this is consistent with projects that have been undertaken by the town in the past, I think of the Coolidge School and other properties, where the town has leased those properties to a private developer, and improvements have been made on those projects and those properties by the developers without having to comply with the procurement statute, which would have hindered their ability to develop those projects, and yet still had the implications and application of the prevailing wage statute. So, again, this allows the two parties to come together, a synergy between the energies on both the private side and the public side, a more advanced and timely development of the town's project, and ultimately, the town benefiting from the application of private efforts in concert with the public project. Mr. President?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, is that the end of the?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to put this on the floor, please?
Mr. President, I will make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorized filing of a petition for special act for public-private partnership for renovations at Arsenal Park with the attached act providing for construction of improvements to Arsenal Park in the Town of Watertown.
Is there a second? Discussion? Counselor Palumbo?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Does this include that this is only a portion of the park, so that this home rule petition refers to a public-private partnership, but only on the eastern part of the park? Is that understood?
Correct.
Is that how you understand this?
So, it'd be about 240 feet on the easternmost portion of the park, which we are describing as Phase 1.
Excuse me?
We're describing that as Phase 1.
We call that Phase 1, okay. And the 25% design that the Conservation Commission passed, that's the 25% design for the whole park, is that correct?
Yep.
So, they have a design for this portion?
Yep.
And what this will do will be allow Boilstone Properties to use their, allow the town to use Boilstone Properties personnel and equipment and so forth to complete that portion of the design?
So, it would be two things. We would utilize their dollars to complete the design for that portion of the park, and then use their contractors to construct.
So, the other 75% of the design, how is that going to take place, and is there more community meetings involved, or is that, what's the, how's that process happening?
Sure. So, and it would have to be accelerated. It would need to be done, you know, in the next several months. That's a process that could be accomplished, again, for that eastern portion. We would certainly take that back to the Conservation Commission, also would bring the design to the council for your consideration as well.
So, that has to happen in terms of the steps here, in terms of next steps, that has to happen, and then the construction can take place. So, what are you looking at in terms of timeline?
So, in order for that, for this all to work and to be constructed or almost entirely constructed by this fall, it would have to begin construction, probably the latest by August, end of July, early August.
And that's the time, the end goal is by the end of the fall?
Yes, to have it constructed predominantly complete by end of October, early November.
Yes, to have it constructed predominantly complete by end of October, early November.
And so what happens, from the legislative perspective, how is this, how quickly can a home rule petition move forward? I know there's ways to move things forward, but this seems to be relatively quick. And does it have to, home rule petition has to be in place before any construction can happen, is that correct? So we can do the design, we can complete the design maybe at the end of August, but in order for them to stick a shovel in the ground and start to help, or is some of their money going to be used for the design too, for the second part of it?
Yes.
So that has to happen sooner. So how quickly can you get the home rule petition?
If I may, Mr. President, fortunately, the design process is not subject to a procurement process. Design for public works projects are exempt from the procurement statutes. So that can proceed, and the town could work with the developer in terms of funding that, and that would proceed at pace. Communication has already been had with the legislative delegation to try to move this forward. Unfortunately, there are no guarantees with the state legislature, and the hope right now is if this gets in before the budget cycle process begins on the state level, there may be an ability to get this done quicker. And there has been at least preliminary discussions and assurances that, luckily, the town is blessed with a very robust legislative delegation that has specific interests in the town's well-being. And I'm not saying that's not the case for other communities, but I know that luckily, Mr. Hector, Mr. Lawn, and Mr. Brownsberger all are already on board with this concept or have been communicated with respect to this process, and there's a hope that that will be shepherded through as quickly as possible. But there is no guarantee, and you're entirely correct, Counsel, that until this act is passed through the legislature authorizing this public-private partnership, there would not be an ability to undertake that process, and no shovel could go into the ground cooperatively until the act is passed.
Thank you, Coach. Counselor Falcoff?
Thanks. So Attorney Rich, through you, Mr. President, when you say "an act," is that the same as saying a home rule petition?
Home rule petition is for a special act.
Okay. Thanks. And then, I'm not sure who this question is addressed to, but the mention of iQub funds, can you tell me the status of the iQub situation?
Mr. Manager?
Yeah. Mr. President, just to follow up Counsel Falcoff's query and other councils have asked, just by way of background, the Athena Health, along with the town, had submitted a joint application to the Commonwealth for approval of the infrastructure investment incentive program, or iQ, back in July of 2017. Since submission of that application, the parties have been working toward approval from the Commonwealth. The town is still looking to move forward with the iQ program, is waiting to hear from Athena on how best to proceed. So that's as much as I have right now.
Counselor Donato?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could you explain what the 240 feet entails? I know if anybody's been to the Conservation Commission, I know it's the grassy knoll area. Does it also include the raised grass area?
Yes.
It does not include the hardcourt area?
Right.
Okay. Because I know that there had been, at the Conservation Commission hearings, there had been a lot of talk about how the hardcourts, and I know that design went through a lot of iterations, so at some point, when we get to the, what is a 50% plan next, there could be some opportunity for the public to weigh in on the hardcourt area as well.
Yes, so the idea with this would be that we would accelerate that first phase, which is basically some landscaped areas, some seating and a pavilion, a knoll, and then a flat grassed area. That's the entirety of it, with some seating areas and things of that nature. So it wouldn't include any of the hardcourt surfaces and some of the conversation that have gone on about what we should or shouldn't include in the hardcourt areas.
Thank you.
Counselor Kalas?
Thank you. Just following up on Mr. Driscoll's comment about the ongoing conversations with Athena Health, and then Mr. McGoon indicating that a shovel would have to be in the ground by August, is that correct?
Yep.
What would be the status of iQub if we don't have a resolution to the process at that point in time, if we've already started a project? What would be the implications here?
So for this project, as the conceptual capital improvement program that is before the council envisions a $4.3 million project to do all the improvements for Arsenal Park. This proposal before you tonight is to allow us to take advantage of mitigation for Arsenal Yards to accelerate one component of that park, that $4.3 million park improvement. The second opportunity is the use of iQub funds, which were envisioned to construct a community path through the park. So if iQ comes to fruition, that'll offset another portion of that $4.3 million project. If it doesn't, then again, it's back to the town funding sources to move forward with the park or not, as we see fit.
If I may, as a follow-up, through you, Mr. President, so iQub would not be involved in this particular portion of the development?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Felton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I need some clarity again on the design, and it seems like there's two parts to this. There's the resolution to form the public-private, and then it seems like we're also approving to go ahead with the 25% design for what we're calling phase one, but we're planning to come back with a design for the rest of the park. Trying to get a sense of where we are in the process and what the implications are, voting on these two things together.
So the Conservation Commission has approved a 25% design for the entire park, including this phase. What is before you tonight is the opportunity to accelerate the complete design of that first phase, which again, wasn't controversial before the Conservation Commission in the context of the conversation about hardcourts and such. So this portion wasn't controversial. Conservation Commission's approved that 25% design. This would allow us to accelerate design of that aspect, again, bring that before the full council prior to any construction, and also accelerate the construction of that first phase. The remaining 100% design for the remainder of the park would be something that would be subject to that capital budget item, assuming that that got funded, then we would move forward and complete that design for the rest of the park. But again, that would come before the full council for approval.
Sorry, I'm still confused. So you're saying this would also come before the council again, before shovels go in the ground for phase one?
Yes.
And you, but you imagine the design taking place because, proceeding, because you don't need the public-private partnership in place by the state legislature to move forward on design, just on construction?
Correct.
So part of my concern is, it seems that we're giving up control by and large on this phase one without really realizing how it impacts the whole park. There's some uncertainty around iQ. I'm not aware of any design looking bridge to bridge and big overview of this wonderful facility we have and the location of Arsenal Park with everything going around. I think it's a great idea to form a public-private partnership. I'm a little concerned about the timing in that I know that the developer feels like they've been waiting a long time. It is a long time, three or four years since they've owned the property. But, I'm sorry, just lost my thought. So yeah, this is, the time, you know, they want this done in time for their project in the fall, which I understand. I mean, I certainly agree that a $500, $600 million investment in Watertown deserves a beautiful park next to it, but I'm also concerned about the overall implications of what exactly we're giving up on the control and how assured are we that this private-public partnership is going to move forward in the remaining phase of the park after this phase one happens?
I'm going to recognize the town attorney after Steve.
Thank you.
In terms of that last aspect, the public-private partnership is for this phase of the park. It's not for the other phases. If there are opportunities like iQ for other phases, then again, we'll continue to pursue that, but that's separate and distinct from this aspect that's just dealing with phase one. Attorney Rich?
If I may, again, Mr. President, I think it's important to keep in mind that the designer for this portion of the park, the eastern part, the phase one, is the town's designer. The town is not giving up any control. In fact, the town, by maintaining ownership of the design, and there was some suggestion at one point that the developer would pay the designer directly, and I raise concerns about that. The intent is to have the designer provide funding, to have the developer provide funding, but the town maintains the contract with the designer. The designer answers to the town. The town has come up with the plan. The plan has been approved, the 25% plan has been approved by the Conservation Commission. That's the plan that will be executed on town property. We will be leveraging the resources of the developer, but the town will maintain the control of any development on its property. The agreement that's referenced in the special act will be an agreement under which the town will have that level of control. It is not a situation where the town's development is dictated by a developer. There's happenstance that they want a pretty park next to their development. The town has, for a long time, wanted to develop this property. We're going to leverage what they're trying to accomplish through their permit and through the funding that will be accelerated, but the town will not be giving up control. And I think that's a very good point, very good concern to raise, and one that we made clear in our meetings, that the design is the town's design, the town will maintain control of that design.
If I may follow up, so my concern is that we're parcelling Arsenal Park, so when I say we're giving up control, because there's no guarantee for the remaining of the park, the remainder of the park, that of course, the developer is mostly concerned with the park abutting their property. That's my overall concern. I'm not sure why, also, the Conservation Commission, we're relying on them to design and if they're coming back, or if there's any flexibility or opportunity with this public-private partnership for more design expertise with, as you said, there's no restrictions, whether it's the developer or the town paying for it. But when I look at the design that's there that I'm aware of now, that's to date, I have real concerns about the impact on whether it's tennis courts or the cross-country team, if there are activities at this proposed pavilion, let's say, you know, does that mean that then the rest of the park is closed? Or, you know, the grade changes there, how that affects the cross-country teams since they currently run all the way up there? So I know this isn't a discussion about the design per se, but it also feels like we're approving the design and to move forward with the construction at the same time that we're approving the act to form a public-private partnership. I guess that's the heart of my question. Thank you.
Again, if I may, Mr. President?
Yes.
The design is, again, it's 25% designed for the entire project. The reason the Conservation Commission is involved is the Conservation Commission has care, custody, and control of this property. So they, by necessity, are involved in this process. The intent, of course, and I would certainly defer to Mr. McGoon on this issue, is that the portion of the property we're talking about, the phase one, would be designed in a manner that would be consistent with the further design and development of the project. There is no, we're not approving a design today, and in fact, the whole issue about funding, there's a limited amount of funding that comes from the private developer. Their funding, there will be funding made available to release more design ability under the contract, but that's a limit, and it's based upon their permit that ties them into the portion of the town's property, the Arsenal Park property that abuts their own property. So again, leveraging that area, developing it consistent with what will ultimately develop in the rest of the park. But I believe the idea is that the park has to start somewhere, and this is an opportunity to jumpstart that process and move it forward. But I think there will be sensitivity to developing this portion of the property in a manner that will lend itself towards the further development. There's no design that's being approved tonight. There's a process, as Mr. McGoon suggested, as to that design, and I think that will be coming back before the council at some later point. This is simply authorizing a process, that process being an agreement that will be entered into between the town and the private developer, an agreement that will make sure it will protect the town's interests. So again, we won't lose the control, and the intent, again, is to make sure that it's a consistent development throughout the park, recognizing all the interests and not developing it in a way that would prevent the future development of the rest of the park.
If I could follow up, so I hear you saying that the design will be coming back for approval for council, and then my second question, if you could reassure me again, control or leverage of the town, is it going to be more clearly laid out if, you know, unforeseen things happen, things go wrong, whatever? When it comes to construction, who is in control, like how much of the park is disrupted, and the timeframe, and who is overseeing that things are going as expected and according to plan? And if there is, for some reason, a crash in the market, or, I'm just trying to think of contingencies as far as how the town is protected, you know, if we do move forward and things come up, who has the authority to review, stop, authorize, and work?
I'm going to say that this is, Attorney Rich, this will be the last question on the design of the park, and we're talking about here, we're not talking about the design of the park. We're talking about a process to move us forward for the eastern portion. We've been told by Steve, we've been told by Attorney Rich, the council and the town will still have control. So that's going to be the last question on design, and if you have other questions about a special act, please ask those questions, but tonight is not about the design. We've been assured, or else this wouldn't be on the agenda if the town did not have control. Correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Rich.
In a brief answer, yes, we will maintain the control and to the point of contingencies, issues like that, it's a construction project, those are dealt with. The crash in the market will have no impact because, under the special permit, they're obligated to provide a certain dollar amount. We get the dollar amount, and the town, under any agreement, will maintain control of the development process.
And I'm also going to add that, I'm going to support this, but I don't, given the interactions we've had with our state legislature, not with our particular, but at the legislature as a whole, I don't see, I can't see this moving forward that quickly, but I do think that we should be taking every opportunity to try to make that happen. Counselor Palumbo?
Just one quick question about the mitigation money from Boilstone. Is it all going to be used up from this piece, or, I forgot what the figure was, Steve, to be honest, so I just want to know if this is it, or is there more?
No. So they have provided mitigation for transportation improvements, off-site transportation improvements, that has nothing to do with this. This is simply mitigation money for the park.
So, but it'll all be, will be, the mitigation money for the park will be used in this phase?
Yes.
That's what I was just, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Baze?
Yes, I was just wondering, so if this doesn't get approved by the legislature in a timely manner, is there a Plan B?
I would say there's, I'm not sure there's a good Plan B. Probably the best hope we would have to create some efficiencies is for the town to accelerate some of its work, but as Attorney Rich said, if we spend dollar one in a private effort, then we have to go through the public procurement process. That takes care of the efficiencies, takes care of the savings, takes care of the time savings, in which case, we'll be doing it. We can still have a contribution from Boilstone, although they have expressed some doubts about that, if this doesn't happen in a timely manner, but we would have to do that and take that up after the fact.
I thought they couldn't do that. I thought that was part of the agreement.
No, they could do that. I said they threatened that.
Counselor Felton?
Thank you. So again, my question isn't about the design itself, but the timing. I hear a little unclear. You're saying-
You're saying that it will be coming back to council for final approval of the design, whether it's Phase One or the whole park?
So two things. In the conceptual approval of the capital improvement line item for Arsenal Park, the motion that was made by the council is that there would be a public presentation of the Arsenal Park design to the council. I certainly have every intention of doing that and doing that prior to any construction happening within the park. As Attorney Rich indicated, the care, custody, and control of the park is with the Conservation Commission. Obviously, the council is an important entity in that whole process and the approval for any expenditure of any dollars. So yes, we will come back to the council for approval of Arsenal Park funding for the construction as part of the capital program. We'll also come back and present the design to the council, both for Phase One, if that's able to be accelerated and move forward in a more quickly timeframe, or the entire park if that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or concerns? Do we have a motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Nine E is a resolution adopting the Town of Watertown Hazard Mitigation Plan 2019 update. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. We forward you email correspondence from Chief Quinn, from Chief Quinn stating that the hazardous mitigation plan for the town has been approved pending adoption by the Honorable Town Council. But just by way of background, back at the January eight Town Council meeting, there was an informational presentation on the draft plan by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. So at this point, Mr. President, members of council, perhaps Chief Quinn can come up and briefly speak as to the certificate of adoption by the Town Council or adopting the Watertown Hazard Mitigation Plan 2019 update, and what this would allow the town to move forward with chasing or pursuing grants and various other things. Mr. President, Chief Quinn.
Mr. President, members of the council, this has been a long-going project, been working on it for the past 15 months with Mr. McGoon, Mr. Me, and Mr. Schuman from the DPW. And the, it's finally, everything's been approved by MEA and FEMA. The final step of this is to have the council formally adopt the plan, and then FEMA will send that adoption form to FEMA, and then they will send the plan back with the formal adoption, and the plan will be in place for five years. This is an update of the one that we did initially in 2012. And then this plan, once it's in place formally, the town will be able to apply for FEMA mitigation grants, such as pre-disaster grants, mitigation, flood mitigation assistance, and hazardous mitigation grants. We'll be eligible for those grants now that we've completed this study, and I look for your formal adoption of this policy. It's been a long time coming, and we're happy to be near the end of this process.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the hazard mitigation?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the Town of Watertown Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Yes?
One question, just follow, and I just, will the, after the vote tonight, will that find the plan that we voted to approve tonight be placed on the town website?
Yeah, once we get it back from FEMA, we have to send the paperwork into FEMA. They will send it back with the formal adoption, and then we will post it on the town website.
Fantastic. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, no problem.
Ten, committee reports, and ten A is a Committee on Public Works report regarding a bicycle and pedestrian plan. Counsel Piterelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Works met April 2nd. Myself as chair, Counsel Palomba as vice chair, Counsel Woodland secretary. The purpose of the meeting was to provide policy guidance on the request to move forward with a bicycle and pedestrian plan. Mr. McGoon and Ms. Weiner began by noting it's been a long time since the last bicycle transportation plan was done in 2003, which did not include pedestrian needs. The current plan is out of date, and it will be useful for comprehensive planning purposes to have it reflect today's priorities, developments, and growth in town. It was noted that the plan would be done by a consultant and paid out of the existing available funds in the Community Development and Planning Office. Additionally, the committee discussed the consultant's potential scope of work that would be included in the new bicycle and pedestrian plan. Counsel Palomba made a motion, seconded by Counsel Woodland, that the full council endorse the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee's request to move forward with a bicycle and pedestrian plan as presented, and to include a representative from the Commission on Disability to the Steering Committee that will oversee the development of the plan. That was unanimously voted, and I want to thank Counsel Woodland for promptly preparing these minutes.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the report? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And can I get a motion on the action item?
Mr. President, I make a motion that the council endorses the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee's request to move forward with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan as presented, and to include a representative from the Commission on Disability to the Steering Committee that will oversee the plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ten B is Committee on Human Services and Rules and Ordinance Report Regarding Noise Regulation Revisions. Counselor Palomba, who is the Chair of Human Services, and Counselor Donato is the Chair of Rules. Counselor Palomba?
Thank you. I'm reading the summary report. The full report is available, and I want to, before I even read the summary, just want to extend my appreciation to Counselor Felton for writing the full report as well as writing the summary. It was quite a long meeting, and there was quite a number of topics that were covered, so my appreciation to Counselor Felton. President, at this meeting, which was held on February 13th, was myself as the chair, Counselor Donato the Chair of Rules and Ordinance, Counselor Baze the Vice Chair of Human Services, Counselor Woodland, the Vice Chair of Rules and Ordinance, Susan Falcoff the Secretary for Human Services, and Counselor Felton, the Secretary for Rules and Ordinance, is also attending. We're Public Health Director Larry Ramden, Council President Mark Sideris, Vice President and District C Counselor Vincent Piterelli, Governor's Counselor Marilyn Devaney, and members of the public. You could see the attached sign-in sheet. The agenda item was to continue discussion of revisions to the noise ordinance, Chapter 95. I convened the meeting at 7:12. I gave a brief recap of the last three meetings on the subject, held in October, March, and June of 2018, all of which concluded that the existing noise regulations were out of date, unclear, and contain contradictory language and goals. Changes still need to be made on the updated noise, the draft noise ordinance, and the discussion included concerns about growing background noise, determining relative noise, and whether to address absolute maximum levels. It was noted that there are many different approaches to noise ordinances in other towns, but they generally include absolutes, as well as provide user-friendly language and charts with decibel levels to foster better understanding of tolerances. The discussion also included the possibility of creating noise zones or districts in order to provide relative or background noise levels in context of place, with differences between residential and commercial or industrial zones. It was noted that densely populated cities or towns also provide standards for construction noise, including for different times of the day. It was acknowledged that exceptions can be included for special town events or game days within reason, and still have a standard of respectability. Fines or penalties may need review. I made a motion to include absolute levels in the noise ordinance, seconded by Counsel Donato. The motion passed, four in favor, one present, and one no. The joint committee then continued the discussion, focusing on the idea of creating new noise zones, how noise might be measured, how they would address fairness and levels. Committee members and attendees stated that they do not, did not receive this information and other information from staff, including qualitative and quantitative standards, definitions, enforcement tools, and what other towns are doing and/or have learned about efforts to reduce noise pollution. Counselor Felton made a motion for the joint committee to receive materials and advice from town staff about noise zones, seconded by myself. The motion passed with four in favor and two opposed. I adjourned the meet, the motion to adjourn, which passed six to zero at 9:32. And again, my thanks to Counselor Felton for the summary, as well as for the full notes and all the attachments you can find on the full notes of the meeting.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
Mr. President, I make a motion to accept this report with some amendments, and I identified eight different sort of matters of form or clerical errors that should be corrected before this is included in the final minutes. I'm happy to send that off to the, rather than read them, I can just send them off as clerical errors.
Attorney Rich, should we do that, that way, or just not accept the report?
I think, I think one thing that might be considered is tabling the report, and then having the corrections submitted, and then having the report resubmitted.
Okay.
Okay. So I would draw the motion. I'll send the email to the committee chair and the secretary to create it, so correct it for the next meeting.
Motion to table? Motion to table, please.
Yeah, so motion to table.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Woodland?
Just, I think this would probably benefit the council in general. The AG's office produces guidelines on the open meeting law, and part of those guidelines talk about meeting minutes, and it's just a quick passage from there. While the minutes must include a summary of the discussion on each subject, a transcript is not required. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Please submit them to the secretary of the...
And the chair. I'll copy the whole column.
Thank you. New business, we have an item that came up last week, and it's a request to refer to committee the matter of whether there are appropriate modifications to the zoning ordinance regarding excavation work that will provide more protection to the neighbors, and I'm going to recognize Counselor Falcoff, who brought this up at the last meeting.
Thank you very much, President Sideris. So I made a mistake in the last meeting, talking about referring this to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances. By definition, any zoning changes are taken up by the Committee on Economic Development and Planning. And so what I would like is to refer to that committee, a discussion of Section 8.00 in Article seven, no, eight of the zoning ordinance that concerns regulation of soil removal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I didn't hear the last part, regulations concerning...
Dirt, soil.
Soil. Oh, I'm sorry. Not snow removal.
That's a whole other subject.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Any new business to come, any further new business? Seeing none, communications from the town manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I've got six items, just five, five items that are going to occur in the next two weeks, starting this Saturday. In Sunday, there'll be the wedding and event showcase at the Commander's Mansion from 1:00 to 4:00 on both Saturday and Sunday, April 13 and 14. On Monday, April 15th, the administration building will be closed for Patriots' Day. On Friday, April 19th, for Good Friday, the town hall will be closed at 1:00 p.m. On Saturday, April 20th, the Health Department will be having the rabies vaccination clinic, again, in the lower level of the town hall. The cats and carriers will be at 1:00, and the dogs on leashes will be at 2:00 p.m. And the fee would be $10. And then lastly, two weeks from tonight, the fiscal year 2020 budget will be submitted. One other item, Mr. President, members of the council, was an email that I received yesterday about mid-afternoon. I spoke to the Town Council President and sent it along yesterday afternoon. Just by way of background, this was an email from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council regarding Community Preservation Act. The email was sent to me indicating that we are one of 61 communities in the MAPC region that has adopted the Community Preservation Act. They're asking municipal leaders whose communities have adopted the Community Preservation Act to sign on to a letter that expresses support for current legislation, which is House 2464 and Senate 11618, the proposal would increase the registered deeds fee in order to ensure a higher match for the community preservation committees that has fallen to, from 100 percent in the early years to only about 11 percent currently. So, Mr. President, members of council did forward this yesterday. The reason, sent it along and bring it up tonight, it was in the email that received yesterday afternoon was, wanted us to let them know if the community would be able to sign the letter on to support this Community Preservation Act funding, or specifically the current legislation, looking for an increase in the registered deeds fee in order to ensure a higher match for community preservation committees. Mr. President?
Thank you. Because this is a very time-sensitive matter, I'm going to ask for the council to authorize that we let the manager sign the letter, and if need be, I will look to Attorney Rich if we need to put this on a future agenda for confirm, okay. So can I get a motion?
Yes.
Motion to authorize town manager to sign the letter on CPA funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Request for information? Counselor Palomba?
Thank you. I just would like, if we could get an update on the community aggregation process, where we are in that. I think it's stuck in DPU, but I'm not sure. And I'd like to know when the timeline might be. And related to that, is it possible to get a bit of information on our percentage of renewables energy, and see if there's a, meaning, our percentage of renewable, leave it at that.
Thank you.
Any other requests? Counselor Felton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, like an update on the policy for remote participation developed by the town manager, and if we could get a current schedule for street sweeping.
Any other requests for information? Announcements? Any announcements? I just want to announce, and I thought the manager would do this, last Saturday evening, the library hosted a 150th gala where over 700 members, 700 people came to the event. It was 700, I think, 25 they counted. We saw an email to that effect today. And I just want to congratulate the manager, the library trustees, the library director, and everyone who put a great event. I wasn't able to attend, but from all accounts, it was a very, very nice celebration. So thank you. Any other announcements? Public forum, any member of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you.